I'm Liz Kurnitz Thurlow, the moderator. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and all of our co-sponsors, I welcome all to this virtual forum. I'd like to thank all those involved in putting these forums together. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Hence, we do candidates forums. Today's forum is for primary candidates for Pierce County Council District 3. The primary election is Tuesday, August 4th, after which the top two vote-getters will move on to the ballot for general election. And that's why it's important to vote in primary elections. There are four candidates for this seat. In ballot order, they are Amy Kruever, Yana G. Cook, Marcus Young, and Joe Zeichkin. With us today are Yana Cook, Marcus Young, and Joe Zeichkin. Amy Kruever had a conflict and could not be with us. Our timekeeper is Terri Baker from the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. She will hold up cards to let you know when you have one minute, 30 seconds, 15, 14, 13, 12. And candidates, please remember to stay in gallery view so you're able to see the timekeeper and me. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. These will be given in ballot order. After that, the order of answering questions will rotate. All candidates will be asked all of the same questions. At the end, closing statements may be up to one minute. So, your opening statement, please, Yana G. Cook. You're muted. Unmute.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for the invitation, and it's an honor to be here this evening with you. My name is Yana G. Cook, and I am running for Pierce County Council in District 3 because I care deeply about our district and the direction that we must take in order to have a brighter future for ourselves and our children. And the people of the 3rd District really deserve reasonable and accountable representation on the county council. That's why I have been spending the last 11 months going to all the meetings I possibly can, knocking on doors and making calls. I have visited, I've been on the county council, going to those meetings for quite a long time, for 11, 12 months, and regional meetings, and ag meetings, and water meetings, and housing meetings, and homelessness meetings, and community meetings about the community plans, from Ashford to LB to Eatonville, all the way to Spanaway. It's 657 square miles, and I've been doing my best the last 11, 12, 10 months, anyway, it's been since August, so it's almost a year, in reaching out to my communities to find out what their needs are. And I have found, as when I ran for a nonpartisan position in 2017, how closely people have the same values and the same concerns throughout this area. And I have a plan to make our county government more responsible, more responsive, and reasonable for all the people in this area of 650 square miles. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Marcus Young, unmute yourself, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcus Young. I'm running for Pierce County Council, District Number 3, along with these fine people. We first, well, first I'd like to thank you all for the invitation, and those that are watching along. For me, my journey started not too long ago. Found myself in the backseat of my car, trying to figure out how I got where I was at. And at this point in time, I had found myself homeless because of unforeseen circumstances. But through that entire time, I could continually hear my great-grandmother who raised me. Her two words that she would always tell us is that, number one, we were born with purpose, and, number two, everything happens for a reason. I've come to understand that that period in time in my life where I experienced homelessness was just adding another layer to my voice. And I've been one that have always tried to speak up for those who did not have any voice, or those who weren't comfortable with speaking up for themselves. And I feel that in District 3, we are having the same issue, where we are not being heard. We're building more and more houses with no reachable services. The structure doesn't even remotely meet the growth that is taking place, which speaks to a larger equity issue. Also, out of the 7 million people in the state of Washington, 39 counties, out of those counties, 39 counties, the black and brown representation is only in one of those. If we say we want change, we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. And so because of that, I have stepped to the plate to represent not only myself and my culture, but also those people that live in this district that seem to continually be forgotten. Thank you for this time, and thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Joe Zeichkin, please, unmute. You're still muted. Nope, you cut it off and then on again.
The host who's meeting me, it says, okay, there you go. All right, so. All right, my name's Joe Zeichkin. I'm a Republican, running for the Pierce County Council, District 3. I was born in Tacoma. I've lived in this area my whole life. I've been through every fact of life that you can deal with. I, um, I don't, this is difficult, I guess, again. My mom and dad, I don't want to sound like I'm looking for sympathy here, but my mom and dad, we're divorced. I grew up in, with my mom. We did everything, food stamps, everything. I've been down that road. I've had to break food stamps up to get cash so my mom could buy beer and cigarettes. So I've done that. In the meantime, I ended up moving with my dad, moved up to Randall. At 15, I got my own, I got a job, supported myself, moved out at 16, and finished high school, moved out here to Tacoma, got a job, got married, been married 35 years. I have four wonderful children that are very productive members of society. I think that the dad needs to be in the home, and I think we need to make it easier for, to have better jobs that allow people to have just one parent working, or at least have one parent at home most of the time when they're young. There's just so many issues to go over in 30 seconds. I think that the transportation and the housing are a huge part of it. I think that the Pierce County did a poor job planning anything. There's no roads going north or south, except for Meridian and Highway 7. And I would like to work on that. And, yeah, Republican, thank you for your vote. Sorry about that.
Thank you all. Now we come to questions. Because some information is always the same, the first candidate to answer will have up to two minutes, and the others will have one minute. And you can ask, you know, add information, commentary, you can say, "I agree," you can say, "I agree and," or you can tell us what you want. We should have time to get to lots of questions.
Okay, I couldn't hear you. Everything went wrong, key.
I'm sorry. Well, that's your end, I think. So you have two minutes. If you're the first person to answer, you have one minute. If you're not. Those who are viewing in real time may text questions to 253-948-6029. I can't actually get this to show before, is it there? Buzzing, anyway. 253-948-6029. It's also down at the bottom of the screen with our co-sponsors. So the order of answering will rotate with each question. So for question one, Marcus Young will answer first. So you might as well unmute yourself now. What are the most important issues for the county to address within your district? And how will you approach those if elected to the county council?
So I thank you once again for this opportunity. As I stated before, there's many issues when it comes to this area. We have two very distinctive areas. One is more of a rural area, and then we have an urban area that's continually growing. And so one of the issues that we need to make sure is that we do responsible growth, that we're not moving people out of their homes, and we're protecting the environment that we find in clusters of, even Fredericksen, there's clusters of urban-type living and rural-type living. The other issue is the fact that our transportation, there is none. There's been new construction down 176, and there wasn't even forward-thinking with that when it came to making turn-in bus lanes. We, as Yana had stated, we have over 600 square miles of land out here. If you take away Mount Rainier, we're over 300 square miles, and there is only four miles of transportation within that area. And so these are things. Also, we don't have services in this area. If you need services, you have to travel to downtown. What I would do to change that is, one, when it comes to services, the Bethel School District owns a lot of land. I would partner with Bethel School District to make remote sites out in this area where we can man those sites, or staff those sites certain days of the week, with certain resources and services that our constituents would be able to address and be able to come and utilize. And that's just one of the areas that we would make some changes that aren't all that costly. We could partner with areas out here to help to build that up, as well as our small businesses when it comes to transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Zeichkin, unmute, please.
Looking for it, and then you unmute me. Can you repeat the question again? What was that?
What are the most important issues for the county to address within your district? How would you approach those if elected to the county council?
Okay, that is a great question. I think Marcus hit several of the points that I, and I agree with. I realize I have one minute. So I think that the growth management has been atrocious. So I think that we need to not just pack 1,000 homes into an acre and then throw them all on the same roadways that we're all using. So I think we really need to sit down and take a look at how the traffic access and arterials are laid out. There's just no, there's no finishing. Everything stops. You know, every road is a, it comes to a T, and then you're driving through neighborhoods and everything. Hard to do in just 30 seconds, but that's the part I'm going to go with. The growth, the transportation, I think the roads need to be redesigned. I think the traffic patterns. We're in an age where the lights can be timed, where we don't have to be stopping every time we go to a red light and stuff. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yana Cook, unmute.
Thank you so much for the question, and it's a good one. And just for clarification, the mountain isn't really in that 657 square miles. But I do know that the Bethel School District takes up 200 square miles in this district, and it is very important. There isn't even a bus line that goes through that area besides the school buses. It is a huge, huge concern of all the people that I have talked to. If you go to the county council meetings, you have for sure heard that the developers push through their plans, and there's no pushback. And so when they plan something, they don't have skin in the game. They don't consider the community plans and the impacts of the, of traffic. They don't consider the plans of the future of parks or water. And those are very important. And we have very many farms and ranches that need also to have a voice. And we can't push the rural any further out and become sprawl. So I'm one of those people that's going to push back when I get on council.
Thank you. Okay, Joe Zeichkin will be first for this one, so go ahead and unmute. You get the two minutes if you want it. Much of council District 3 is very rural and quite different from much of the urbanized area of Pierce County. County council members are elected by district but are responsible to the entire county once elected. How would you balance the interests of your district residents against county-wide interests if they differ? Joe Zeichkin.
Well, if they differ, I think that District 3 is going to have its own set of issues, and that's true. But it also, Marcus pointed out, has a very urban part in Spanaway, Fredericksen Park, almost to Parkland there. And so I think that we're going to have a lot of the same issues as far as that goes, and it comes back to transportation. I think that that's a big part of our issues for business, for people getting home in a timely fashion, and getting to work in a timely fashion, being able to work around here. Businesses would be more inclined to build in Fredericksen or something like that, as long as the traffic was, was, you know, the employees could live, afford to live around here and drive back and forth to work in a timely fashion. You know, they did that, there's so many projects that are on hold on the, on the roads thing. I was looking at that, and they're doing that 176 thing, clear down to, or canyon across the river down there in Chalip, but they're not, they're not pushing out any further than a 208 street. I think if they're going to do that, canyon should go clear out to 352nd Street. I mean, that's the kind of thing we need to look at, and then base our developments off that. I realize there's a growth management thing south of 224th, and I appreciate that. And that's the urban part of the county. But I think that, I think we could work together with, oh, I thought it said 30 seconds. Good. I think we could work together and stop the sprawl, build homes, you know, not eight feet from each other, and have the roads go through. Just make it a little bit more organized. Right now, the whole county, and especially District 3, is very unorganized as far as the way the roads are set up, the schools are set up, the parks and stuff, I think that's all good. And then also, too, I would hop on Marcus's thing, I think an annex out in this area for the county to have those services available, even if it was part-time, it'd be a great thing. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yana Cook, unmute.
Yes, I think that we do have seven districts, but as we work together, we're going to be, we're going to be impacted by this economic turndown, and we're going to have to be together on this, and the respect and honoring the needs of both the cities and the very high urban, high density, and the respect for our farmland. And the more that you build into the farmland and create that sprawl, the more that the water table is affected, the more that we cannot really nurture our farmers and take care of our farmers, and our ranchers, and our resources. So I think building that communication and collaboration so that the more urban areas respect and honor and work with us so that they too can do more high-density, they already have the transportation, they already have the connections and the infrastructure already there. So I think working together in a collaboration and sharing that, we will come to some really good answers and moving forward for the progress for all people in Pierce County.
Thank you. Marcus Young.
Can you read the question once more, please?
Much of council District 3 is very rural and quite different from much of the urbanized area of Pierce County. County council members are elected by district but are responsible to the entire county once elected. How would you balance the interests of your district residents against county-wide interests if they differ?
So I believe to actually balance if our ideas differ, I believe being there at the table is the first and foremost piece. Unfortunately, our leadership prior to now has been MIA in a lot of situations. If we're not at the table, then our voice can't be heard. While we are county councilmen and county councilwomen that actually work on the entire county, the same way that we have to yield some of the time and the resources for other areas is the same way that we require that those other areas help out this area. There are many things that need to be done in this area. We cannot continue to go without a voice on our council that brings the attention and brings the focus back to the middle, and that is making sure that all areas are taken care of in an efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Yana Cook will answer this question first. You have the two minutes if you want. Racial inequity has always been a significant issue, and has been especially prominent since the recent police killings of African-Americans have been shown on television and social media. How can and should Pierce County address racial inequity, and what are your plans and hopes to deal with this?
Thank you very much for that question. This is, this is a question that I have given deep think, thought to, and as a white woman living in the experience of rural Washington for 29 years, I haven't had that experience as an African-American that has had the systematic racism with little or no access to loans, job opportunities, and to be redlined, and furthermore, having to face the lethal question about having children go out on the street and possibly fear for their lives just to walk or to drive. And so I believe that with equity and collaboration, I believe that we could have more POC at the table. I would, I, as a member of the council, would ask for them to be a part of the answer. I would reach out to the community leaders and ask them for collaboration and ideas and how to make the right decisions to lift up those voices, and to make sure that our public safety and working with the police, we have new training, we have new reinvestment in training, and also add in community oversight and community participation, and a revamping of the order the way it's been. So I think we should also include behavioral counselors and abuse counselors to be a part of the police team, to be called upon instead of just police officers to every single incident. So there's a lot of change I would be working for and will be open to, and I want more and more POC to be on those committees and on those advisory councils, and I will see to it that equity is one of the first things that I bring forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Young.
Thank you for the question. Definitely hits home to me. I've experienced this on a number of levels. I've even experienced this in this process that we're currently in. I believe that the time is out for talking. We can have side committees, side bars. We've had them for years, for decades. This is a time for accountability. People will only do what you allow them to do. And when I'm allowed to do things like the police issues that we have, or even some of the boards that we have, where there is no representation of any persons of color, and we utilize different other spectrums to say that we've met the quota of minorities being represented, then the system is going to keep doing what it's doing. So I believe that the first thing that needs to be brought forth is a level of accountability on all levels, and not let's build up new proclamations and resolutions that sound good on paper, but there's nothing behind it. There's no substance behind it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question? I just want to be sure that I'm answering correctly.
Racial inequity has always been a significant issue, and has been especially prominent since the recent police killings of African-Americans have been shown on television and social media. How can and should Pierce County address racial inequity? What are your plans and hopes to deal with this?
All right. I'm not sure that local government can fix, you know, a nationwide issue. I think that if they could, that we'd all be following somebody else's plan that would fix it. I think that as far as banks, banks are there to make money, and I don't think banks care what color you are. If you meet the criteria, they're going to loan you the money. That's why they're there. And as far as the police go, I think in this area, I don't know about other areas, but I've gone up around here, I used to have the cops turn around and pull me over as soon as they saw me coming the other way. I don't have black skin, so I don't know how to speak to that, but I see the police around here are mostly reflective community. There's black guys, there's Hispanic guys, there's lots of white guys, but I think they kind of reflect the population. And so I think that a lot of this is just, I don't know, I don't see it the same way that Marcus does, I'm sure. And I, and there's not my fault or his fault. I can't help the wet skin I was born with, so neither could he. So that's the way I look at it. Thank you.
Okay, for the next three questions, we're going to reverse the order, so Joe Zeichkin will go first, then Marcus Young, then Yana Cook. Pierce County will be electing a new sheriff this year. The sheriff has overall responsibility for police, but some decisions come from the county council. Currently, in the country, there's been discussion of shifting some police funding to other kinds of services. What sheriff services do you believe must be retained, and what could be reduced or eliminated in order to find, fund other kinds of services that could address mental health issues, family issues, racial inequity, and police violence? I know that's a long question.
It is a long one, but I don't mind it. I actually like, I like the law enforcement in this area. I don't think that there's a huge issue in my area. I mean, I'm not in downtown Tacoma, so I don't know. But I think, I don't know that we really need to cut. I was talking to a candidate for sheriff, actually the black candidate, Sheriff Darren Harris, and he was telling me that there's 30 positions open in Pierce County that they can't fill, and it's not because of a race requirement or anything, it's just that they can't, they can't get applicants. Somebody wants to do the job anymore. So I think that we need to make the job, not stigmatize it, I think we need to help these people out there. We're paying them to protect us and to protect everybody in the community. And I think that if you remove police, especially from the urban communities, you're going to have more problems. And if you, you know, we had those two officers killed in El Paso. They walked into domestic violence thing, and boom, they're shot dead. They didn't even pull their guns, and they were both, you know, Hispanic. So I think good training would go a long way as far as conflict training, conflict resolution. But these guys also need to have the proper equipment. They need to be protective, they need to know what they're getting into when they walk up to the scene, and just, I think they need to be in the community. And I wouldn't mind seeing them get out of their cars once in a while, walk around a little bit, talk. Big thing, and the people should know who their cops are. I mean, I wave at the guys that drive around here, but I don't know them, but I mean, they might recognize my car, but again, I did talk to Darren, and he seems to think that it's more of a leadership issue down there as far as the conflicts they've been having with people. So, yeah, I think that we need to support our police department, keep the funding the way it is, and maybe do some additional training. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Marcus Young, and you're muted.
Thank you very much for the question. If you look at the 2021, I believe it is, expenditure budget, you'll see that the budget calls for $730 million to be spent by Pierce County. If you look within that budget with the Pierce County sheriffs and the Pierce County Corrections, it's just under $300 million. And that's just corrections, just Pierce County sheriffs. If you look in that same budget, item line for mental health shows at $68,000. It's not my job to determine what needs to be cut. I'll leave that to the sheriff, whoever's elected. But there does need to be a shifting of funds that takes place. The belief that Joe provides when it says that we don't want cops is not it, but we do not believe that cops are meant to handle every situation. They're not trained to handle every situation. So let's put some money in some of those areas where professionals are at, including homelessness and other things that have been criminalized, because we call police for these situations.
Thank you. Yana Cook, and you're muted.
Again, thank you for the very good question, and I agree with Marcus on this. The amount in the budget that is for public safety, for the courts and for police, and the police department and jails, is extremely high, and having only 68,000 for behavioral health is really a sin, and we really have to fix that. But as far as retraining, I think there is a need for retraining. There is a need to cut back on the militarization of the police. There is a need to make it more community-based and more community-responsible, and we can define and retrain the police that we do have with those things that they're really, really good at, and we can add to that a co-group of behavioral counselors, abusive counselors, people that are familiar with mental illness, and have them work hand-in-hand. I think that's going to be an improvement, and I think community-based is going to be an improvement, and that's the direction that I would lead in. Thank you.
Thank you. And that leads us to our next question, which Marcus Young will answer first. Mental health issues are a continuing problem in Pierce Mental health issues are a continuing problem in Pierce County. Although new facilities have been established in the last few years, access to mental health treatment remains a significant issue. How would you address mental health services for Pierce County residents if elected to the county council?
Thank you. We have to go back to the previous answer. We always, listen, when it comes to certain issues, the response is always, we don't have enough money. When we talk about mental health, you can't talk about mental health without talking about homelessness because that sits under that umbrella. All homelessness is not the same. But there are people there that are dealing with severe mental health issues. When you talk about mental health, you also have to talk about drug addiction, mental health issues. But we constantly say, well, we don't have money. We don't have money. Money doesn't grow on trees. You're absolutely right. It doesn't grow on trees. However, we do have to reassess when something is overly funded. Listen, I've worked with the police. I was a police explorer. Many people don't know this. I was a police explorer from the age of 16 to 21. I would tell you, we need more money for the police. That's always, if you ask the county clerk, they're going to say, we need more money for the county clerk. Everyone's going to say they need more money. It's the responsibility of the council to now say, what do you need to operate? And then take proper money and put it in the areas that are deficient. Mental health will not fix itself. We are going to need people that work efficiently and effectively in that area. And we have to stop outsourcing some of these services to different places. We need to build a nest within the county that outside services can see our example and be able to flourish it even more. Thank you.
Thank you. And that would be Yana Cook next? I'm sorry, I just wanted, a question came in, so I had to look. Yana Cook, please.
Yes, and you know, this is a great question. In October, we had an opportunity, the council had an opportunity to, it basically broke down to about $1.58 a month, a 1% tax for mental health. And bipartisan, it split down the council, which is really, really sad because $1.58 is a candy bar a month, which would have really done retraining, allowed centers, did collaboration between different agencies, set up all kinds of different access for mental health problems. And for the homeless, he's absolutely right. I am a co-founder of Love Abounds Here, which is a homeless charity. And the homeless have a wide variety of different issues besides alcoholism and drug abuse. Abuse come from abuse situations, mental health issues, living in their cars and wanting to work. So there's all kinds. And we need to reach out through the council and come together on this. And I agree with Marcus.
Thank you. Joe Zeitgen. You're muted.
There we go. All right. It seems to me that we need to look at like Seattle and Portland and Salem, these big cities that they spend more and more every year on homelessness and they get more and more homeless people. So obviously, it's not a money issue. It's more of a how they're dealing with issues, at least in my opinion. I think that the drugs are a huge part of it, that we need to stop the flow of drugs into the system and help people that are addicted to the drugs get off. I mean, we sell marijuana through the state. That is ridiculous, but regardless. And then as far as the mental health, I think that we need to identify the people that are truly mentally ill and get them the services that they need. But a lot of people want to be out on the streets. They want it, and it's the truth. They've interviewed them on TV. They want to be out on the streets. They want that freedom to do the drugs and break the law and do whatever they want to do without any accountability. So if you spend more money on it, you're going to get more of it. That's the way I look at it. And I'm against that tax, by the way. I'm not going to vote for that if I'm on the council.
Thank you. We'll get back to that. Next question, Yana Cook goes first. There's a lack of affordable housing in Pierce County for residents at and below 80% of area median income, and particularly for those at and below 30% of area median income. If elected, how would you suggest that the county address this problem? What role will you take?
I'm sorry if it's my, but I couldn't hear that question at all.
There's a lack of affordable housing in Pierce County for residents at and below 80% of area median income, and particularly for those at or below 30%. If elected, how would you suggest that the county address this problem? What role will you take?
Well, that's a very good question, a very powerful need in this county all over. We have addressed this in a way where we asked the developers to build more high-rise, high-density, and then they put in a percentage of housing for those low-income. But it isn't enough. And I think the cities need to look, and our cities need to look at the high-density apartments and land that we have and work in a collaborative manner so that we can find housing for the homeless, for those people that are, they're working three jobs and there's a very good chance they may not be able to make the rent. So we have to work as a collaborative unit on this together with the agencies, with services that are out there, with the state and the funds that we have for housing and for development, and come with a logical, address it in a logical, sensible manner. Because I believe we have the brilliant minds. We have really great staff. We have great agencies that want to work with this, and it takes a collaborative effort. This council has been obstructionist towards finding answers outside the box, for finding answers for the good of the whole. And it doesn't have to be all about the bottom line. It has to be about taking care of the people and finding, I think, affordable housing. But it also is, I believe, a thing about wages. We have to make sure that people are making a living wage in order to afford their rent, in order not to become homeless. And so there's many factors in the homeless situation or the stressed housing situation that have to be addressed together. And those are the things we have to look at. If we keep doing things the way we've always done them, we're not going to come up with any good answers. And I would be working very hard to make that happen.
Thank you. Joe Zeitgen, you're muted.
Turn the video off too. So there you go. All right. So to reduce the cost of a home, right now it costs $20,000 to $30,000 in permits just to get to start to build a home. So I think that we need to really take a look at that and cut the cost to build a home. We also need to try to get people to own homes. I think we need to look at different ways of financing homes that people can own them. Because you treat something better if you own it than if you're renting it. And to have a landlord and all that, I think that people will have a lot more pride in their homes and a lot more stability in their family and everything if they own the home. And then again, it comes back to infrastructure. I think that we need to make sure that we plan ahead, not let the developers build a housing development right at the end of the T so you can't punch the road through. The roads need to go through. It's going to make the businesses come out with a good paying jobs, allow people to be able to travel in a safe manner. And I'm out of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Marcus Young.
Listen, we may not be able to do everything, but we have to do something as the county. And we can't keep making excuses for not making bold moves and bold statements. I am a rentor. I take pride in the place that I rent. And my kids are growing up in a great, solid home and environment. What has to be done is the county has to invest in low-income housing. We have to bring affordable housing to this area. Once again, it speaks of inequity if we continue to gentrify Tacoma and Lakewood, bring them out into an area that doesn't have the infrastructure to support the growth, and then say, hey, find a way to survive. That's not the way to do business. That's not the way to care for people. And the last time I checked, as an elected official, your primary job is to serve the people that have elected you. We must always remember that we are servants first. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to the original order of Cook. Oh, I have that backwards. No, for this one, we're going to do the original order. Sorry, Cook, Young, Zeitgen. And this question has been partly answered by some of you. There are two local option sales taxes available to Pierce County that have not yet been adopted, even though many other jurisdictions have done so. One is the 1/10th of 1% for mental health. The other is the 1/10th of 1% for housing. Each would generate millions of dollars annually to address these changes. And each would cost taxpayers only one penny for each $10 they spend on taxable items, not food. Do you support either or both of these? Why or why not? If you do, how will you work with other council members to get them passed? Yana Cook, and you're muted.
Thank you. That's a great question and one that I have been pondering and thinking about for a while. Because I absolutely think that the people of Pierce County are going to be aware that in the next year or two, we're going to be impacted severely by having to make some tough choices. And I don't think 1/10th of 1%, like a candy bar a month for mental health, is going to be asking, there were 75 people at the Pierce County Council meeting that I was at in October, all of them from all ranges, from students that had friends that were worried about suicide, to teachers, to professors, to past judges, to lawyers, to supervisors and superintendents of schools. There was 75 people really pleading for the council to go with this 1/10th of 1%. And so I feel that the people that I serve would be very, very positive about that 1/10th of 1% or that candy bar a month. And I think also for housing, the people in this county would want that. Again, I mean, a very small amount that would cover so much and help so many people. And I believe if we can flip Pierce County blue, I believe we're going to have a coalition on the council that will support that. I don't think it's going to take an enormous amount of engineering to get people to agree that this is a needed thing. And it is at a very small amount. So I would definitely be fighting with this, and I'm sure Marcus would too, that this is the fair and right thing to do.
Thank you. Marcus Young.
All right. So I know we're going to talk about this tax, and I know I only have one minute. But listen, first of all, we can't keep taxing people just because we don't want to move funds from other places. There's other places that we could address first. But in regards to the tax, I was, as the president of the Beppe School Board, I was one of the people who signed off on the resolutions to support this tax. I find it very strange, and no, not strange, but very predictive, that that tax spelled along party lines. And what I would say to my constituents is it's real easy to deny something that never affects you. You don't have to deal with homelessness like we do, like the African-American community has. You don't have to deal with mental health. I have an adopted son right now that has mental health issues, and I fear for his life when he becomes an adult and his interactions that he's going to have to have and the things that he's going to have to deal with without a proper support out there to help him out. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Zeitgen.
Okay, so yeah, I definitely get both of these. Although I do agree with Marcus, there's money there to be had. And I think that for programs for like his son, I'm all for those. I just don't think that we need to be raising taxes. I think we pay enough in taxes. I think we pay too much in taxes. And I would not be for raising any taxes or fees, especially with this government shutdown where people can't work. And now you're going to say, now we're going to tax them more because, and they couldn't work? I mean, I don't think that's fair to people. I think we need to do some serious reshuffling of the monies that are there. There's a huge budget. It's, I have the numbers in front of me and I don't, the computer shut off waiting. But I mean, the budget is so big. There's got to be money for Marcus's son and behavioral health and all that out of all the excess that they spend on, all kinds of crazy stuff. And we could go through the budget line by line like Marcus does. I'm sure we could figure it out. But I'm against both of these, and I'm going to get all future taxes like that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have an audience question. We have a couple, actually. And one minute each, and I'm going to make up an order. Zeitgen, Young, Cook. And the question is, given the increase in COVID-19 cases in Pierce County, do you support mandatory mask-wearing, mandatory social distancing? And do you have other ideas to help us?
Is that question for whom?
It's for Zeitgen first, Young second, Cook third. One minute.
So many, okay, no, I don't support mandatory masking. I think that this is well overblown. I'm not against, if you want to wear a mask, I'm all for it. I'm not going to laugh at you. I'm not going to try to shame you. But I don't think that, I think the research is in. And I think that they're finding that, you know, the death rate is down to what, is it 1.7 per 10,000 people or something? Which I don't want anybody to die or get sick. But that's a pretty low death rate. And I think we're being, well, it's a one-minute one. I think we're being pushed to fight against each other, even on the mask issue, when it shouldn't be that big of a deal. It's, you know, this thing is not near as deadly as it was. And it's doing what viruses do. If you read the report, the doctors say, viruses get weaker and weaker, and they spread easier, and they just fade away and they die. And that's the natural course of the virus. And I think that we need to listen to the doctors. I mean, they're the scientists. They know what's going on. But I, no, I'm not for the mandatory masks.
Marcus Young.
Let's listen to the doctors till they say something we don't agree with. See how many fingers I'm holding up? Eight. That's the number I'm up to in my family and close friends who have passed away from COVID. Eight, okay? It's easy to talk about what we shouldn't do when it hasn't hit your home, when it hasn't hit your front door. But when it's hit your front door, you're willing to do whatever is necessary to make sure that, watch this, not my life is okay, but that the people around me's life is okay. Okay, what about the lady that I walk by? And I'm a symptomatic, and I don't know that she has pre-existing conditions. What is so hard about just following directions? This issue has not shortened, it's gotten worse. And for us to determine that it's gotten better because, well, there's not 10 people that died this week, there's only five. Well, what about those families of the five that lost their life? Okay, let's be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Yana Cook.
I absolutely agree that we need to take every precaution. We need to wear masks. We need to pay attention to the scientists that have come out with the data. We have over 132,000 people. There's some in my family. You know, 132,000 people, take, I think, like say Rapid City. I don't know, I think the population is around that. And lay them all out. They're all dead. That is a whole lot of people, Joe. That is a whole lot of people, and it's growing. And we absolutely must take care of one another. If you have to stay home, you stay home as much as possible. You wear a mask. You stay six feet away. You take care with your hands. You bring the gloves. You do everything you can to save a life and not treat it cavalierly. It is absolutely our responsibility as responsible human beings to take care of one another and to stop this madness.
Thank you. We're back to our regular order and our regular timekeeping. And Marcus Young is first. In recent years, the Pierce County Council has been quite polarized on significant issues. How will you contribute to gaining consensus in council decisions and assure that issues get resolved rather than having no solutions because of polarization?
So as the president of the school board, while we do not post our political preferences, definitely when you're working with people, you can tell where they stand. And with that, we have gotten a number of things done with our school board. And we all have different ideas. We have different perspectives. I'm committed to spending the time necessary to talking with those that don't think like I think. This is not the time to become offended. This is not the time to become offended. This is not the time to become discouraged. This is not the time to pout, but to work. And so I'm committed with working with not only the people that are on our party, on the Democratic side, but we also have to work across that aisle and make sure that we are not forgetting the task at hand. And that is that we are servants to the people, not to our own agenda, not to our own pride, not to our own perspective. But what are the needs of the people? And guess what? Everyone that lives out here is not Democrat. There are people that live out here that's Republican. And I have to be willing to talk to them and find out what their needs are the same way that I talk to the Democrats. Unfortunately, in many situations, that doesn't seem to be the same reflector that happens on the other side. And so I would be committed to reaching across the aisle, to talking with those people that have different perspectives than I have, and coming up to a consensus, a middle ground, so that we're not in a stalemate on what needs to be done for our people. While we're stalling, people are hurting. People are hungry. People are not being taken care of. People are being misused and abused. And it's not all by people in the streets. Sometimes it's by the elected officials who choose not to do what we were elected to do. And that is to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Seidgen. Muted.
Can you repeat that? But I think it's about compromise, and it's what we're talking about. Is that right? Trying to work together with the other council members?
Yeah.
I can walk into a room and get along with everybody. It's not bad. I mean, these guys are yelling at me now, or at least it sounds like it. But I care about people. I have compromised people in my own house. So, you know, like I said, if I offended somebody by saying what I believe, I'm sorry. But I can, I can walk into a room and get along with anybody. These Zoom meetings don't really give you the idea of what a person's like. So you're just, you know, seeing one part of it. And it's just not, I don't know, it's just not what it's going to be. When it comes down to the council, we're going to sit down and talk about things together and make compromises and work together on solutions that work for everybody. I mean, that's easy to do. You just got to talk to people and a little give and take, and that's how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yana Cook. Muted.
Hi, thank you for that question. And observing the council meetings for quite a few months over a year, I have noticed that, of course, partisan politics played a very large role. But when I started running, when I first went into public service, I ran in a nonpartisan race. One of the reasons my hair is purple is because red and blue make purple. And I believe in reaching out. And I have spoken to so many people that share the same concerns. And I think the people in, on the council have to listen to the people that come to them. And by listening to the people that they, that come to them with their concerns and drawing them in and listening to them and having their counsel, we can represent them better. And we can reach across and say, look, this is from the sixth district, but these are also concerns from the third district and the second district. Let's work together. Forget the D and the R. Let's work together as the service we are for our people as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Seidgen is first. What can the county do to minimize the continuing effects of climate change? How serious do you think this is, and what role will you take?
What can the county do? I think the county does a lot already, and I'm not really sure that the county can fix the world's climate. I mean, I'm not sure that the seven people in the county council can come up with the plan to fix everything. I am all for clean, clean water, clean air, clean land. I don't want litter. I don't want pollution. I don't want that dump out here on Meridian to leak into my water supply. I'm probably on the same aquifer or close to it as they are. So I think the county needs to monitor that and make sure that, you know, nobody's polluting, obviously. And then look for that hidden pollution like at the landfill out there, or even the Hidden Valley one here on 176. Because they don't know everything either. The county doesn't. They don't know how the water, where that seepage is going. I mean, they find out new things all the time. Remember up in Frederick Way, they used to light the gas on fire coming out of the dump up there? Now there's all apartments there, I think. But so I'm all for, if you cut a tree, plant a tree. I love trees. I keep my, I pick up, I pick up garbage. I'm out there putting up signs and picking up garbage and throwing it back in my truck. I am all for clean, green, and keeping it simple. But then also, as far as like the electric cars and all the electric stuff that they were talking about, the solar panels, there's a lot of hidden heavy metals in those things that we're not really sure how to recycle properly yet. They say they are, but I am kind of wondering if it's not going to be like nuclear waste. And they say, oh, by the way, we have this big pile of lithium batteries that's leaking into your water supply. So I'd really like to be really clear on all of that stuff before we switch over. We're an oil-based economy. That's what we are, we're going to be for a while. I would love to see, go to hydrogen or something. But it's going to take a little bit more technology than what we've got. So yeah, I'm all for clean, green, and keeping it real, man. Thanks.
Thank you. Yana Cook.
Yes, thank you for that question. The environment is something that we all are affected by. And in this county, there are many steps that we can take to reduce our carbon footprint and to work environmentally for our water resources. As Joe brought up, that landfill, that toxic dump is sitting right on our aquifer. And the more that we pave and the more that we build without thought of what, where that water goes, the more affected our water is, more polluted our water is. We must be conscious of the future for our children and our grandchildren. We must plan wisely and take into consideration that back in the 1900s, a horseless carriage was considered something that was, you know, absurd. But people didn't hold on to making shoes for horses. They moved forward. So the green way is, I think, the way of the future. And we can have good paying wage jobs come to this area. And I think we can employ people locally and save on transportation and pollution. I think there's lots of options we can go on to stay green.
Thank you. Marcus Young.
Can you, can you give the question one more time so I make sure I'm on?
What can the county do to minimize the continuing effects of climate change? How serious do you think this is? What role will you take?
Very serious, very serious. Role is an active role. And what we have to do is we have to stop saying that we're concerned and yet still take actions that show there is no concern. Whether that is putting together a task force that looks at forward thinking when it comes to the new developments that's being made, so that we're not just looking at it from a revenue standpoint or from a growth standpoint, but we're also looking at it from this perspective of how is it going to affect our environment? Another thing we can do, we have these major streets. Why don't we have buses going down these streets? That will cut down on the pollution. It will cut down on the people that are driving their cars. Just a little fact of knowledge, in the Bethel School District, we have what they call walk-to schools. With those walk-to schools, 80% of the parents still drive their children to school because there's no sidewalks. Simply no sidewalks. So these are things that we could do now that will affect our future for our constituents and our children.
Thank you. We have lots of questions, and there's another one. But if people in the community do have questions, 253-948-6029. For the next few minutes, we can still possibly take your questions. So for the next question, Yana Cook will be first. Pierce County's funding is limited significantly by the 1% cap on property tax increases and by recent declines in sales tax as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic's effect on the economy. Counties in Washington State cannot use the BNO and utility taxes that cities in the state have available. If elected to the Pierce County Council, how would you address this lack of opportunity to increase funding for necessary services if you think this is a problem?
Can you repeat the last part of that? I didn't quite hear the end.
If elected, how would you address this lack of opportunity to increase funding for necessary services if you think this is a problem?
No, that, no, I caught that. It was the middle part.
Counties cannot utilize the BNO and utility taxes like cities and the state can.
Right, right. And actually, the BNO tax is an income tax on businesses that was placed on them back in the 30s. And it was supposed to be temporary. So I have, as a businesswoman, I have a bit of a difficulty with that one anyway. But we are going to face drastic revenue challenges because of the reduced revenue in businesses. And I think we have to address this in a very collaborative way because we have, we do have the resources that we once had, rather, we're not going to have. And so I am, I am going to, when I become elected or become a member of the council, I am going to turn back 30% of my salary, as an example, as a lead, to other people to perhaps cut their wages, do furloughs, do a lot more working from home. And I want to have a plan, and I do have a plan, for small businesses. And the small businesses that are not going to make it through this, we want to have a plan in place. And that would be to have retraining and work collaboratively with the unions, with the agencies that are already here, with the tech schools, with skilled centers, so that we actually have a framework for those people that are not, no longer going to be able to do their business, so they could be retrained, recertified, and get apprenticeships and start a new life and be able to survive and thrive and be able to take care of their families in a new way. And that's a part of my plan, that I know that if we sit down and do collaborative work with the county, with agencies, with nonprofits, with spiritual groups, religious groups, and with community centers and businesses, we can come up with this. And that's part of what I want to do, to help people make it through this crisis.
Thank you. Marcus Young. You're muted.
I'm sorry to burden you. Can you read that, please?
Sure.
We got a little mixed vote.
Pierce County's funding is limited by the 1% cap on property tax increases, and there are the declines in sales tax as a result of the COVID-19's effect on the economy. And counties can't use BNO and utility taxes. How would you address this lack of opportunity to increase funding for necessary services if you think this is a problem?
Thank you so much for repeating that. First of all, I would try to work and partner with our state budgetiers. There are some things that have happened on the higher levels that they need to be accountable and responsible for, not only within the state, but also within the federal government. We have CARES Act dollars that have been released to states, to counties, and because of bureaucracy and because of party lines, you have money that is being held up right now that should have been released in order to help some of the small businesses and some of the other situations that are taking place. The longer that stuff is held up because of egos or whatever the case may be, it's only making this situation more and more dire. Once again, I can't say it enough, we are elected to serve the people, not our own interests, not our own temper tantrums. We are here to serve the people. And so we must make sure that in everything we're doing, we're doing that. We also don't need a bunch of raises either. And I've said that on other platforms as well.
Thank you. Joe Seidgen.
Okay, so yeah, I don't think we need to be raising taxes on anything. I think we need to be looking like Yana said, at different ways of combining things, of being, you know, proactive as far as combining the jobs. Like, I looked at this contact tracing thing here that they spent on this, this money, this, I can't remember what it's called real quick right now, the CARES Act money. Well, that's tax dollars. That's our tax dollars. And they spend it like it's water. So that they, instead of taking furloughed Pierce County workers and making them contact tracers and giving them a little bit of training, they spent, I could add it up here, like $19 million on contact tracers. They're going to create a whole new form of government. They're going to hire people on, you know, a whole new department. And then we're going to need human resources for them. And then it's like, if you give, you know, it just keeps adding on and adding on and adding on. There's money there that they just need to be spent more wisely and make the cuts where they need to be and decrease the size of government because of this crisis. I think we just need to decrease the size and make some cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a short question. Marcus Young answers first. What is your stance on preserving farmland in Pierce County? How will you take action on this stance? Regular timing, Terry. You're muted.
I saw Terry's hand, so I didn't know. Once again, I believe that we have a very unique situation out here. When you look at the ability to grow, the only place there is ability to grow is out here in District Number Three. And so with that, there are situations that call for growth. But I believe growth has to be responsible. Growth should not be something where we're pushing people out of the livelihood that they made a family thing and they worked hard to do that. You have people out here that they, they're ready to hold on to their farmlands and do that for some years to come. You also have other people out here that they had planned for that farm to be passed down from generation to generation. And unfortunately, the generation stopped. Maybe the kids weren't interested anymore. And now they need to release that land. If that's the case, then yes, we work with that, but we do it in a way that is responsible. We don't just turn around and sell it to the highest bidder and tell them to pack on as much as they can on these three or four acres of land, you know, build it high, build it skinny. That's not effective. We can see here that that has not worked. And so we must be responsible, even if that means coming back to the community that it is affecting, putting together a think tank. This is something we do often with the school district, is you go to the people that is going to be affected by it. You put together a think tank and help us come up with the best way, the best strategy that will be both beneficial to the land but to also the people that are surrounding that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Seidgen.
Let me repeat that one real quick. I-
What is your stance on preserving farmland in Pierce County? How will you take action on this stance?
Okay, so I am for, I'm pro-preserving farmland in Pierce County. I'm not sure if people realize that the Growth Management Act, 224th is the line. I'm not all the details, but south of here, you can't divvy it up and turn it into tract homes. But it comes back to my transportation issues. I think that we need to really streamline our transportation. We have so many dead ends and tees on our roads that it makes things difficult for anybody to even to build a nice development somewhere that people can get to. They, everything is, we need to sit down and plot the county out and decide where we can and can't build in that Growth Act and make the infrastructure so it is economically feasible to do it. For the bank, I mean, for the businesses and for the people. And I'm all for listening to what the people have to say about it.
Thank you. Yana Cook.
Well, I've been on the Ad Committee meetings. I've listened to their concerns. I've been with community leaders that have already done something that Marcus brought up as far as meeting with people. Well, the community plans really outline for Frederickson and for the Upper Niskali Valley what they would like, what those, what those community plans would like, Frederickson community plans. And I've seen in regional meetings where they redline out all those concerns. I was up in Ashford, south of Ashford, on an organic farm, and they were proposing a 600-story, not 600 houses plus an 18-hole golf course. And the farmer said, I have 40 acres. I can only water five of them. And they're going to have this, this 18-hole golf course with the poisons and everything on it. And it was going forward at the county level. So we really have to listen to those community plan people. We have to respect that, and we need to, and we need to have respect for our farmers. I'm 100% for protecting farmland. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Seidgen is first on this one, and this is a question from the audience. What should be the role of government versus the private sector in reducing unemployment?
I think the government needs to get out of the way. I think they need to, I had some of this written down here, but-
some of this written down here, but they need to make it easier for for people to get to work and make it easier for businesses to to employ people and make businesses are making money. Just like, they don't care, you know, the employees, they don't care about color there or anything, as long as they're making them money. So I think we need to look at making, and I guess I didn't come out the way I meant. I mean, they're they'll hire anybody that will that wants to work. So I think we need to make it easy for businesses, for manufacturing to come into Frederickson, for the private, just the distribution out in Frederickson. I think it's in a perfect spot for a distribution center. We're not tearing up the valley to put warehouses in because although there is farming out here, it's not like the valley. The valley grows much better, and they're just covering that all up with with warehouses. So I think Frederickson's a great place with all the rocks out there. I can tell you from putting signs in, there's tons of rocks out there. So there's not a whole lot growing out in Frederickson. So anyway, I think that's the best place to to help businesses is just make it easy for them to to do their manufacturing, to hire people, for people to get back and forth to work, for the homes to be more cost-effective. So everybody, the cost of living goes down for people. And I think that we can, I think it can be done. It needs to take a lot of work, a lot of compromises, a lot of working together and working with other people on both sides of the aisle. I agree with that. I think that's easy enough to do. So yeah, we'll just let the private sector handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yana Cook?
Oh, I'm unmuted. Thank you. Can you repeat the question again, please? What should be the role of government versus the private sector in reducing unemployment? I don't know why it has to be versus. I think I think we need, me myself, I think it isn't an either or, but an and but. And I think we need to work together with both government, with the state, with the county, with our schools, with our training, with our labor, resources, and partner with them in order to employ people. The government has a role. I think it is to help people. I think the private sector is it needs a seat at that table. We need to partner with them because they they have a lot of tech jobs, a lot of things that are coming up in the future, a lot of automation. There's a lot of need from the business community. We need to listen to, and we need to have them at the table. We need to have the training centers and the colleges and the tech tech colleges at the table. We need to have agencies that know what many of the areas need. So we have to have really a coalition and a collaboration in order to deal with unemployment and make it an employed populace. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Young?
Thank you for the question. I believe that as the government, we can get stuck in doing the same thing over and over and over again. It's almost like a merry-go-round. We keep doing it. I believe that it's time that we have new vibrant connections and collaborations that we think outside of the box, that it can't be the same mundane things that we've done before. Out here at in in Bethel School District, we built the Pierce County Skill Center. The Pierce County County Skill Center is providing graduates with skill sets that would allow them to go straight back into the workforce. I believe that there needs to be a collaboration that goes even a step further, where we have businesses that are connected to the Pierce County Skill Center, where people can get these services or these these trainings and be able to go straight into a job, not just get the skill for a job, but be able to go straight into a job. These are the things that we need to partner when we come talk about partnering with the communities and the businesses where there's not that great area in between.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This will be the last question. Yana Cook will answer it first. And I'm actually gonna give you two questions, and you can, they both are issues that have come up. So you can talk to one or the other or both. First one, half, recognizing that transit services are not provided by the county, what role could the county play, pick, what role could the county play to increase transit services for all residents? And/or are there changes to Pierce County's comprehensive plan you would like to make, what and why?
So I really do think that the county has influence in in transit. It's it's not a direct link, but it definitely influences with with transit, the transit area. We we can't put these barriers up anymore. When you have, you're, you're, we have, Ashford has no transportation. If you if your car breaks down or you can't drive anymore, you have no way to get down to get services. It's it's very, very difficult all throughout our area. And as Marcus knows, and as people know, in the Bethel School District, 102 square miles, there's no transit through there. So we have an urgency to work together to bring those resources together. We can't, we have to stop saying we can't do this. We can't afford this. We can't do it. We can do it. And that's the attitude that we're gonna take because we're going, this cannot, you cannot have a civilization and a good, healthy environment and a workforce that can can move around without transportation, without having those routes come to your people and and serve your people. So I would work very, very hard to make the coalition, to work with the funding and the the agencies that are already in place, and make sure that this is a number one on our list of having to accomplish for our people. Because that's what we're here to do, is serve our people. We can't say, well, the county doesn't really, we do have an effect. We are connected with them, and we have a way to 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 bring a partnership so that the people get what they need, which is transportation. Elderly people have come to me, they don't drive anymore. People that are disabled, they don't drive, and they have no way to get around. They're out, I live out here in McKenna, and there's no service at all. But but Thurston County has bus service all over. In fact, they're not even charging people to get on the bus. So we can do this. We can do this. That's my my-
Thank you. Marcus Young?
Thank you. To say that Pierce County doesn't have a safe with Pierce Transit is not altogether true. There are representatives on the Pierce Transit Board, including representation from Pierce County. Here's the problem, and I go back to a statement I made earlier. While there may be seven council persons on the council, and they service the entire Pierce County, it's broken into districts for a reason, so that you're able to get the voice of the different areas. If our representative is absent, then that means our voice is not being heard. And our voice has not been heard for too long. We need transportation out in this area because without transportation, we have people that aren't able to get to work. And without people able to get to work, now you're influencing the jobs. And influencing the jobs, you end up influencing our economy. There's no reason why we can't get this done. We have to be brave enough and bold enough to make it happen.
Thank you. Joe Zajkin?
Okay, great. I am pro bus. I'm pro bus all the way. I'm against sound transit, though. I don't think we need to do any light rail out here. We're we're just too rural, even in Marcus's area for that. I mean, maybe down the road, when if it ever fills in completely, it could do it. Out here where I'm at, they used to have the bus service, but there was no ridership. So my proposal would be, again, like Marcus said, rethink everything. The ride sharing apps have been this huge market for people. But I think we could do like a carpool sharing app. Somebody, the private sector could come in, make a carpool sharing app, say, hey, I'm driving in from Elby today. Anybody in Edenville need a ride to Tacoma or whatever, or just put it on the website. I mean, it'd be a great, it's a great idea for somebody to make some money, and it's private. But I am all pro bus. If the ridership is there, I'm for it. But, you know, you can't send a bus around for one or two people. It's just not, it's just not cost-effective. We have to be smart with our money, too. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate has up to one minute. We're reversing the order of opening statements, and so we begin with Joe Zajkin.
Okay, and I'm still unmuted. All right. So I'm Joe Zajkin, Republican, running for Council District Three. I agree that I need to work for the people that are out here. I can't, it's not what I want when I go to the council. It's what the people want. And I need to be able to speak directly to the people. My plan is to have public council meetings. I don't like the Zoom meeting. I'd rather have it be in a the school gym or wherever, the church, you know, once a week, once a month, whatever it takes to get the people's, you know, get what they want, to tell me what they want me to do in regarding certain issues. I think I share a lot of the same beliefs as people, but not all the time, not out in this area, because we're urban and we're all both. So I'd be willing to listen to people and do what they ask me to say. I'm Joe Zajkin. I'm a Republican. I'm running for Council District Three. Please vote for me. Keep Pierce County Republican. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Young?
Thank you all once again for having us and allowing us to share on this evening. My name is Marcus Young. I'm also running for Pierce County Council District Number Three. Listen, there are some changes that have to happen, and we have to be bold enough to make those changes happen. We can't keep saying we don't have money when there is money. It's about where does it go? There was a statement that was made earlier that we shouldn't take money from the police. But then later, it was said that there's serious reshuffling of our budget that needs to take place. Those statements are oxymorons. Where do we bring it from? Bring it from the place that can afford it. Really, we won't know, or we'll know once they're able to operate efficiently without the money that they've had. And let's put that money where it needs to go. Let's put that money back into our communities. Let's put that money into small businesses. Let's put that money into homelessness, into mental health, into housing. Let's get these things taken care of. Because if our people are well, then our economy will be well. If our people are sick, our economy will be sick. Thank you once again, and thank you.
Yana Cook?
Thank you. And thank you again for having this forum. My name is Yana G. Cook, and I am running for Pierce County Council in District Three. And I am running because I care. And I've been here for 29 years. I'm a small business owner. And I've been talking to my neighbors all over this area in order to find what their voice is and to find, to give them a voice, because we've been underserved for over eight years now with no one listening to us, with no one being present to represent the people. And the people that I have spoken with really are sincere about needing a change. We need to have mental health. We need to have health access. There's no real health access out here. We need to have transportation, and we need to take care of our rural areas. And I will be their voice. I will, I promise to keep everything open, above board, responsible. And thank you so very much for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here. These candidates are running for Pierce County Council, District Three. They are Joe Zajkin, Marcus Young, Yana G. Cook, and Amy Kruger, who was not with us. Please vote for your choice in the primary election by August 4. You should have your ballot by July 20. If you're mailing it rather than putting it in a drop box, please do so early. I would also like to thank the timekeeper, Terry Baker, and the Voter Service Committee from the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. And huge thanks to our community cosponsors, Affordable Housing Consortium, AAUW, Centro Latino, Eastside Neighborhood Advisory Council of Tacoma, the NAACP, St. Leo's Church, the Summit Waller Community Association, Tacoma South End Neighborhood Council, Tacoma Urban League, University of Washington Tacoma School of Interdisciplinary Arts and Sciences, and the YWCA of Pierce County. Please watch for other forums, read your voter's pamphlet, look up vote411.org, where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office. And if you three have not filled out those question answers, we would appreciate it if you would. Read candidates' websites and do all you can to be an educated voter. And having done all that, don't forget to vote. Thank you, viewers, and thank you so much, candidates.
Thank you, Liz.